Good evening. I call the Maplewood City Council Work Session to order on Tuesday, October 12th, 2021. Mr. Reed, would you please conduct a roll call?
Councilmember Crossley.
Here.
Councilmember Fockingham.
Here.
Mayor Canapra.
Present.
Councilmember Page.
Here.
Councilmember Phillips.
There.
Councilmember Schmidt.
Here.
Councilmember Wood.
Here.
Mayor Canapra, we have a call.
Thank you. Everyone is present, so there's no need to excuse a council member. Item number four on the work session is Board and Commission Nomination Process Discussion. I can, I'll, I'll start. We have been trying to work through this since June. And my, my proposal and my request remains the same. I think that the mayor should be able to provide a recommendation for appointment, and councils should be able to approve that recommendation if, if the body so chooses. The reason why I would like to do it that way is because it's been done for forty years that way. And I do think that we should have a process by which council is able to review the people that the mayor submits for appointment. But I would like to continue doing what my predecessors were able to do. I have no problem laying out a process for us to discuss. I did so at our last meeting. And support discussing that further.
So I would just jump on to that and add and amplify that, to me, it seems like that's reflecting on this and sort of reading through the charter, it seems like that's one of the things that makes the mayor the mayor, is that you bring in sort of this new circle of folks. I think that's one of the things when you're voting for mayor, you got to consider is that the person has sort of the nominating voice. My two cents.
So I, I had some thoughts that, you know, you know, clearly this process started last fall before, you know, we didn't know our body would change. And so I, I've kind of put together something that I'd like to read if you guys don't mind. I know if you bear with me, it just helps me be a little more concise than my thoughts and not meander conversationally. So if that's okay, I'd like to read it.
Sure, absolutely.
Okay, um, so last fall, after receiving feedback from the community and witnessing issues with the nominating process ourselves, council created a new process for nominating board and commission members whereby we worked together to come up with the nominees rather than having the mayor make them alone. The goal of this process is to create one that was transparent and inclusive, and that would remain that way moving forward. However, while we agreed unanimously to this new process, we failed to take the final step by modifying the ordinances accordingly, which brings us to this conversation today. And I guess I'd like to start this conversation by noting an important point, which is that, at least for myself, changing this process had nothing to do with any person in particular, nor was it for the purpose of taking anything away from any member of this body, or for other members gaining something they didn't previously have. Rather, my goal was to create a process that is fair, that is open and inclusive regardless of the specific individuals sitting on this body. As further proof of that is the fact that I have continued to fight for this process despite the fact that I won't even be sitting in this seat next summer when this process is engaged in on any large scale again. Sitting on this council for the last four years, I have witnessed firsthand over and over again how ideas become stronger and better, and problems solved more efficiently and thoroughly when all council members share their input. We are a group of individuals who have different lived experiences that allow each of us to make unique contributions to any problem we are trying to solve, or an idea we are trying to advance. These perspectives continuously come together to make what we do stronger and better. And in analyzing the board and commission process, I felt the same principle would apply, which is why I was in favor of moving to a process where nominations were made together as a group. I can only assume I wasn't alone in that thinking since all seven of us agreed to the change. The process was a culmination of years of information gathering, discussions, and community input. And so I'm not lying when I say it was very, very disappointing and disheartening when this process was ignored this past summer without any conversation as to why. It was even more disappointing to me that when members of this council stood up for the opportunity to ask questions about why a process we worked very hard to create was being ignored, we were met with both public and private criticism by members of this body and the community. I feel that over the last few years, my fellow council members and I have worked very hard to make our city and its processes more equitable, transparent, and inclusive, and have proven that commitment again and again by pushing back and having uncomfortable conversations, which is why it was so confusing to me that certain members of this community who were extremely upset when the prior mayor engaged in the traditional process and supported the new process last fall are now criticizing us and telling us we should abandon it because we should quote "trust the mayor" unquote. I am confused because to me, a true commitment to equity and transparency and inclusivity doesn't mean you only create and engage in processes that benefit you or people like you. Instead, it's about creating processes that give all members of our community a chance to participate regardless of their race, their ethnicity, their gender identity, their political views, and so on. Furthermore, the idea that we as a body should abandon a process created with those goals in mind because we should trust the current person sitting in one seat seems antithetical to the principles of transparency and inclusivity. Because what happens when that person is gone and you don't like what the next person does? Are you gonna want, are people gonna want to go back and do something different? This is, this issue isn't about any one person in particular, and it shouldn't be. I don't feel that I was elected to trust people, rather I feel I was elected to make sure that we have processes in place that we can trust will serve the community as a whole, even if sometimes that means that people who don't think like me end up benefiting from it. Because the bottom line is I represent all of Maplewood, not just those individuals who voted for me who are, share my views. Last fall, I was in favor of moving to a nomination process where nominations are put forward as a group rather than by one person alone, and I remain committed to that process today. Having now witnessed the nomination process conducted by two different individuals serving in the capacity as mayor, this position has only been strengthened as both times I witnessed more qualified and diverse candidates, some more qualified and diverse candidates overlooked that I truly believe would not have been if nominations were made by a group rather than one individual. I'm not saying it was in any way intentional on either party's part, but the fact is it occurred both times. I've repeatedly asked over the last several months for any sort of reasons or evidence why we should return to the old nomination process and haven't been given any substantive answer. Absent any strong and persuasive argument why we should return to the old nomination process, I maintain the position I took last fall, which is that the board and commission process is better served when nominations are made by the council as a whole. I have made my position clear, and a majority of this body doesn't want to utilize that new process we created last fall, then I'll drop it and move on. However, given the fact that there are still five of us sitting here today that approved of that process, to the extent you've changed your mind, I do feel, given the amount of thought and work that went into creating that process, that you at least owe it to the rest of us to share why. I mean, the fact is, maybe you have some argument we didn't discuss previously, which will make me change my mind. However, until then, I remain committed to the position I took last fall, which is to permanently move nominations being made by the councils as a whole and to modify our ordinances accordingly. Thank you.
Thank you. I would like to respond. I do disagree that you haven't received a substantive answer from me. I think that you've received an answer that you don't like, and I can appreciate that. I, one, one big point that I really disagree with you on is that when you say you represent all of Maplewood. I, you asked me last meeting, Councilmember Schmidt, why I didn't want to have the process that you all did in December. And I took time to really think about that. And when I think about how I have to go to each of our, our wards and seek comment and hear from our neighbors when I run for mayor, I have to do that. I can't stay in one ward. I, I have to go throughout all of Maplewood. So while I, I appreciate how you, in your position, in this public service position, look at it how you represent all of Maplewood, I as the mayor represent all of Maplewood. And I'm charged to do that work to represent all of Maplewood. And our city elected me with the understanding, at least forty, forty some odd years of understanding, that the mayor would appoint and approve. So while I understand that your position is you've had community members come to you and, and tell you they want a transparent process, I have had community members in Ward One, Two, and Three tell me that they want to ensure that I submit to you all people that are going to focus on equity, people that are, that are diverse to what we have, people that have not been serving for two decades on a border commission. They, they want other people to have an opportunity, people that are renters. So I've made sure to do that. And I have provided a process to you all where you can say no, or you can tell me, I want you to look at this person, that's been done. You can say, you know, mayor, I don't, I, I don't think this person is qualified, and I will respect that, and I'll talk to you about it. But I mean, let's be fair. In June, when I was emailing you all and letting you know, like, these are the people that I'm nominating, and here are the reasons why. No one communicated with me, save Councilmember Schmidt. So we're talking about a process, you know, that you all did for the first time in December. You get a new mayor, me, I come on board, and I'm communicating with you all, hey, these are the people that I want to nominate, please let me know if you agree or disagree, any issue with that. And no one talked to me. And then on June twenty-second, after I learned that council members have talked to each other and left me out of that conversation, that's when I learned that you didn't like how the process went. So I, I would like for everyone to be fair. Communicate with me. I've given you a process where I'm telling you this is going to be transparent. I gave that to you the last meeting. All you have to do is communicate with me and, and, and not blindside me. I'm done. Thank you.
So I guess I'd like to, to counter a few points. One is that I don't think it's fair to say that people elected you, assuming that, because we did create that process last fall. I mean, I think you in fact even have noted you attended that meeting, so I guess I would qualify that, that that's not necessarily the case for all people. Second, I think my point about representing all members of the community is that I represent people regardless of, of how they feel and how they, what, what their viewpoints are. And so for me, what I've seen happen is that that there are, continue to be only certain elements of our community appointing to boards and commissions. And so I am also committed, the things you mentioned that people have said to you, those are the same things they said to me in Ward Three, they said to my counterparts in Ward Two, and my counterparts in Ward One. That's why we had that discussion and change back in December. So I don't think there's a difference there, and I don't, I don't think it makes the people who have spoken to me any less important just because I specifically only represent Ward Three. The final thing is that, you know, I did, you know, we had a discussion before you gave us those, those names in which, you know, you agreed to utilize parts of the process and then did it, and I, we had a conversation, I expressed my frustration. And I admitted to you that I, I agree, the mistake, the one mistake I made was not letting you know that I was going to table those, and I wasn't comfortable with that decision when I made it, and I'm not today, and I wouldn't do that going forward. And I apologize for that, and I apologize again. But the fact remains is that, to me, it is not a substantive answer to just say, this is how it was always done. And this is not personal to you. This is just about the idea that when we all walk away, that there is something in place is that is, that is going to put forth candidates that are representative of our community as a whole, and, you know, and I don't think that happened either time I've witnessed it under a mayor. I think that there were people, not all, but a few people who were overlooked, and I think they wouldn't have been if that was made by a group, not necessarily this group, but any group. So I, someone else, please feel free to chime in on your thoughts on the matter.
Yeah, I'll, I'll chime in. Excuse me, I think that what, what the mayor has talked about and what we've all talked about is a more transparent process and, and you know, we get all of the applications when they apply online. And if people apply elsewhere, we usually get that information as well. And you know, to me, you know, I'm great at looking at all those, and if I feel strongly about somebody, you know, we can, I could talk to the mayor and say, hey, I like this person. Take, you know, she can take it or leave it, or the mayor can take it or leave it. And then, again, we're going to have another work session or council meeting where we discuss all these nominations with those particular people. And then then they get nominated. I'm not sure it's all that different from, from what we were doing before, that the, the caveat being you're saying the, the council as a whole, including the mayor, would nominate, nominate those people, and you know, if, if we already have an open discussion about it, I don't, I, I don't, I think there's, that's just really nuanced. That's, it, it's not really all that different. And I, I think that if we delineate a good policy or in ordinance where, you know, if there's an opening, we get all, all of the, all of the applications. You know, we go through them, we can email or talk to the mayor, say, hey, I'd like to see this person, or I'd like to see that person. You know, they may say, great, they may not, you know, whatever that process is, your voice can be then heard during the discussion about it, you know, some kind of public forum. And then when they get nominated on the, on a, on an agenda for a council meeting, so I'm not, I'm not I, I don't know if it's, I, I don't know if the being nominated by the whole council is more or less transparent than, than us still looking at all of the applications and having that process of people being able to apply to it as transparently as possible. And then having a discussion with the mayor, and then having the discussion with all of the nominations that the mayor would make on all that. I, I, I think that's still a transparent process. I would just like that, I, I'd like the nomination process to be what the mayor has decided to nominate. And at that point, you can make, you know, you can still have those open discussions. And if you don't like the person they did, then you can vote no. I, I don't really think it's that different than, than what we've been talking about, except for the fact that, you know, we would rate people and do spreadsheets and, you know, whatever we else we would do to nominate somebody as a, as a group. I'm not sure if I, I mean, you know, all through the, the Lewis and Rice memo that we received, it pretty much says, for the most part, that, you know, mayor nominates, and then, you know, we, we approve it, so you know, we can clean up that language in any way, shape, or form, but I, I like the, I like the process that the mayor has already kind of laid out. I don't think it's all that different from, or any less transparent than it was before.
So Sean, can you clarify for me, and potentially for the others who were there during those earlier conversations? The transparency in the process is inherently in that discussion that we have of all of the nominees, not, or all of the applicants about this. But how do you see the transparency if we as individuals are having conversations with the mayor prior to those individuals going on the agenda as a nominee?
During a, let's say, for instance, the mayor nominates certain, certain people to certain posts, whatever they may be. We're in a work session or council session, we're discussing it. Why wouldn't, you know, if you, if you had some concern about it, at that point, you could express your concerns or say, hey, I think this person is more well-qualified, we could talk about it, those kinds of things. I don't, I still think that process is there. I would talk about, you know, nominees for boards and commissions at any time. It's not just because they've, just because the mayor's nominated somebody, doesn't mean that we don't have to talk about anybody else who would be qualified.
I think there's some nuance in that, though, Sean, where you come into the issue of where you're then talking about specific members of the community, and instead of, to me, there's a difference between all of us starting together and be like, oh, I really liked this person because they had this strength, or they had that strength. You know, you have a system where like, you're telling the mayor this person, I'm telling the mayor that person, they're still choosing someone, but then it comes to where like, they've nominated that person, I'll be like, I don't like that per, you know, I mean, I think it's just a different message being sent, community members, and to me, it has a greater potential to make people less interested if they know they're going to be, they've been nominated, and now people are going to come out being like, no. And so that is a nuance that I think can have a distinction in whether people really want to serve. So that's a concern for me and the distinction between the two, but.
Yeah, I would align with Sean's thought on that. To me, it's not a transparency issue. I can see it being transparent both, both ways. To me, the issue is, I, I feel like when I vote for a mayor, I'm voting for a vision and a leadership and sort of implicitly a slate in a way of, you know, and so I want the mayor to have some authority to, to you know, put their stamp on what things look like. That's not to diminish what we're doing as the, the rest of the council. We certainly have equivalent opportunity to make our impact as well, but I, you know, I, I would have assumed before I joined this council that that was the case.
And I, I think you've brought up an interesting point, too, just about like authority, because something I took away from the memo is that the authority is really inconsistent, right? The authority to appoint isn't in the charter, it isn't even consistently brought about in the ordinances. And so I think, like, to compare us to some sort of like strong executive form of government is incorrect because we have a strong, you know, managerial form of government. And I'm, from there, it's short sort of shades of gray, but I want to just take a minute to talk about some of like the common ground I'm hearing, because I think that can help us sort of value that and make some decisions. I'm hearing a broad commitment from everyone to a transparent process, which is good. I'm hearing a broad commitment to figuring this out. I think we've got some vacancies and got to get this figured out. And I'm hearing what I think is a broad commitment to having a conversation. I think Sandy brought up a good point about the difference between discussing applicants versus discussing nominees, and that is an important distinction to me. And I would like to see a process where we have a collective public conversation about applicants that then would hopefully inform nominees moving forward. Um, but ultimately, I think, since the authority is so inconsistent, right, we've got an entire board set up via resolution, which is confusing to me as someone who wasn't here for that. I'm, and I understand that that was done a while ago, so I just wanted to raise all of that.
Yeah, I don't, I don't actually mind inconsistency that much. In fact, I kind of, I've been in situations where I feel like when you start making things consistent, just to be consistent, you sort of end up changing things that there was some intention behind. So that, that's sort of my thought on that. And then I, you know, I think I think there's a, there's an opportunity to, again, just, you know, create it's about a vision and this leadership thing, and there's, you know, I, I think every time we push things down further and further and to make it more and more granular, we create this inefficiency where now we're commenting on every little thing. I think just, I guess in my head, it's you know, just the, the flow of governing this community and doing our work is, is, is that necessary to get at that level with every single one of these positions? Whereas it just seems a lot more efficient to nominate and approve. We certainly have our opportunity to say no if it's, if it's a bad nomination.
Well, I guess from a efficiency standpoint, I can say as someone who participated in the process, it, think it took less than an hour and a half. So I don't think that there was, I think it actually moved more quickly when we did it that way. We sat down, we did it, we got it done. So I, I don't, I don't think that that is a, a factor in this particular process. And I, I do think the point of what I'm trying to say is what has been made by my, my counterparts is that, like, they're, part of the goal was the transparency in discussing applicants, because what was happening was people were applying and just getting overlooked. And so when we have an opportunity to sit down and put forth who we think might be the best candidate, I just think that that is a process more designed to keep people interested in participating in our boards and commissions. And I agree with Councilmember Crossley that I appreciate for sharing the points of commonality that we have reached, and I, we do need to move this forward and, and figure out an answer, because we have increasing number of vacancies in our boards and commissions.
So, so what if we, I mean, that the process could be just about the same, we could take, if their positions opened up, we can take all the applicants, we can have a work session, we can discuss it. And then the mayor can then make a decision after all of our discussion about we should be nominated, and then we can vote on it. I mean, doing something like that before we get the nominations, I think would be a
That's a great compromise.
Yeah, that would be a, a, I, I think that would be okay. I'm, I'm not sure the mayor feels, but I think that's just having a discussion about the applicants we have, and then we're making that decision about the nomination. Now, we, we've all discussed all the applicants. Mayor makes her decision, and then, you know, we can, you know, yea or nay on it. So with this council, I'm sure it'll be all yays, but having a discussion about the applicants beforehand, I think might be, might be prudent.
I really feel that that is a, I do feel that that is a good way to do it. If we're going to meet beforehand, then basically, we're not nominating anybody, or she's not nominating anybody. And nobody gets like their name on a nomination, and then somebody says, no, I don't like that person. That's what I want to avoid. I don't think that that is a good way to do anything.
Right, and, and the mayor will get a good feel for, you know, what the council's thinking anyway in terms of applicants, so that
Well, that, that also solves this sunshine issue that I keep worrying about, like, how do we have these conversations? Then we're doing it in a official public forum, which I really like that.
Yeah. Yeah, and we can do it in a work session, which I think is probably the most appropriate place to discuss applicants, and then
Just what we did last time. So that's perfect.
And then go to
I was gonna say, that's, that's pretty much exactly what we did the last time.
Yes.
Yeah, and, and I think, you mayor, to your points, I think that kind of, I think it kind of solves a, a couple of the issues where, you know, at least we'll get to have a discussion about the applicants before that nomination process. And then, you know, obviously you can make any decision you want, but at least you get a good feel for what the council's thinking, so.
And then the council can be on record as to, you know, where we, you know, before that nomination is made, hey, you know, clearly the council thought this, and the mayor went that direction. Okay, well, now everybody gets to see that and make a decision, you know, based on that.
I have no problem with having a work session where if you all want to discuss everyone that put Park's Board as their first option for volunteering to serve. And then coming out of that, knowing you, everyone's thoughts, and then providing you all with a name that I will submit for appointment. I have no problem with that.
Yeah, I think that that's an excellent compromise because it's essentially what we, what we did before, you know, except that, you know, you obviously still maintain the power to choose someone different. My question, I guess, is for Attorney Graves, you know, how, how do we, how do we fix the mess and make sure that this is, process is clearly, you know, set out so that there is no confusion in the future?
So if you would like, the charter provides that the, and the ordinances provide that the city council can establish its own rules and regulations. And I would suggest that that be via a resolution similar to how we did for setting the agendas. I would also, we, we should have some sort of process, and I think this is probably just internal with the city of making sure there's always a, a, a place where the current
Where the current. Rules and regulations or whatever you want to call them are kept for purposes of review of the city council members and the city attorney and anyone else. That wants to look at them. So there's no sort of confusion on what the current, current rule or regulation is. But I think it would be possible to. Set forth how it would work that way. Of course, that would require the majority of the city council to agree on whatever that process is.
So just, so I'm, I'm, I'm Doncy. So that would mean that we could make one rule that would cover all of these ordinance that would say before we. For the mayor nominates, we'll have a work session and discuss. We can do one rule for that. That sounds really great.
As long as the majority of the board agrees with that. Yes, yeah.
And we also, as long as we're adding that, that language, I think we should. Address the, the application process, which was not previously outlined. And that was again, something that we put a lot of work into making more inclusive. Is to. Put the language into the ordinances that, you know, what we're currently doing, which is having the applications open year round. And we're continually accepting applications, but we do the nominations during. The fiscal year or whatever it is. So I think we should add that to the. The, the rules and regulations and, and guidelines just for future reference.
I think it'd be helpful to, oh, go ahead.
Thank, forgive me. Thank you. Councilmember Phillips, you're talking about the resolution that we're, we're talking about right now that would govern the process, right? Okay, okay.
Yeah, yeah. So again, because the, the application process was not. It was, when there was an opening. Someone would reach out to individuals and ask them to send a resume. And by putting the application online, by making it. Making public aware through various forms of communication that the applications for these boards and commissions are. The open all year long and as we have openings that we will review those applications. And so it just made it a, a much easier process for everyone to be able to get involved. As they, as they learned about them and expressed their interest and then. Having the application online versus having to submit a resume because not everyone has resumes. Just again, trying to make that process more inclusive. And since we have already done that work, I think we should. As we're adding language to this process, that we should include that language.
I have no issue with that. And I want, I want the council to know and our community members to know, I. Used the applications that were submitted on our website to make appointments. I did not. Just receive resumes and go from there. If, if I appointed someone, they did go through that application process that you all started.
But I think something that is helpful to make part of this too, and I think this came up, Mayor Knapper, when you and I were talking about it and doing is that. You know, the idea that anyone who's applied prior and wasn't appointed is still considered, but that there are some practicalities to that. If it's been six months, it would be helpful, you know, as part of the process to send an email, you know, that staff would send an email to confirm their commitment. I think there are this, to even get into that level of detail so that it's very clear, you know, how it works. So I think that those things should also be included so that we're making sure that we have the best.
I'm waiting. I don't want to interrupt you. Keep going, keep going.
Think that's important, right? Because we may, we told people last fall, hey, if you submitted your name, you know, you would be considered, but you know. It's so, I think it's important when you're then six months later or a year later, just to make sure before we go through a process of talking about all these people. That we make sure that they still are. I don't think they should have to resubmit, but I do think we could send a simple survey that says yes or no, are you still interested? And I think that would be very helpful.
Okay, so. Again, I. Let me back up. Something that Councilmember Paige said about getting granular, I think that that is getting granular. And, and I'm saying this for a future mayor. I will tell you, I had a spreadsheet. I had my own spreadsheet that I created and I had all of the previous folks and my notes. And then I had, when I say previous folks, I mean the people that had submitted. An application. What do we, in twenty twenty? And then I had people that submitted an application in twenty twenty one. I had all of those people together. And I looked at everyone. Now, the reason why I say that it's getting a, it may get a bit granular. Or in the weeds is. Even though, even though someone submitted an application in twenty twenty. I don't, I, I guess I just don't want them to automatically think that they're on deck for, for an appointment. Because if someone else submits an application and they are meeting. They're meeting criteria that I'm looking for. For example, they're a renter or they, I, if I know that they have low. So if they, if they, yeah, have low socioeconomic status, like I'm looking for that. And so if someone that submitted an application before. Doesn't meet that criteria, that doesn't, you know, automatically mean that I'm going to appoint them, like I may, but.
It's not a cue.
That's, that's not what I'm saying. I'm saying that, that, you know, like what we had. And because we've created this process that is much more open and inclusive, we have a lot more people applying. For instance, last fall, we have one particular appointment where there are two excellent candidates, but one, you know, we, we had to choose one over the other. That person was still very much interested, but yet they, you know, weren't appointed again and even, you know, and so, but the point is they were still interested. And so they should be considered. I don't think anyone assumes they're automatically up. My point is that we did then have a candidate. Who I pointed out that was sort of overlooked, who seemed very qualified, but then when you reached out to them, they were no longer able to do it. So my only point is before we consider that whole group of people. That we're making sure that the people who applied a year before are still interested in even serving.
Oh, yes.
That's all I'm saying. Okay. Is that we are just making sure so we don't waste our time talking about someone who doesn't even want to do it anymore. You know what I'm saying? That's all I.
Absolutely, absolutely. Okay.
I have a question though. Does that mean, so, and I just, this is my ignorance here. So these applications do or don't have a shelf life? Like once they apply, they're.
No, that was what we, because the problem is, is that before people applied for like during a very small window. And so what we do now is we advertise it in the Maple Leaf. And so people may see it in, in February. But we don't really make appointments till June, so they can apply when they see it and then they'll be considered. That's how we, yeah.
And I, with all due respect, this is something that we probably should get in the weeds on. Because it has been, it's, it's a process that we are setting a precedent for future. So without doing the hard work and being granular. I think future councils may end up right back where we are. So for, for those future councils. I think we do need to get the ordinances right and, you know, in the future, they may decide to change it. But at least at this point in the process, we're codifying everything that, that has brought us to this point. And, and, and setting that, that basis for the applications. As well as the nominations and the appointments, to include everything within the same ordinance. So that it's, you go to one place and you find it and not have to go to eight different ordinances.
Forgive me, Councilmember Phillips. When I'm talking, when, when I said, you know, I thought we were getting in the weeds or we were getting granular, it was. I, I was talking about, I, I think like in the terms of the future, when we are not here anymore, like you just said, you know. For future councils, for future mayors, and I would like for the future mayor to have an opportunity to. To give, to give to you all, like this is the name, this is the person that I want to present, right? And so what I, what I misunderstood, Councilmember Schmidt to be saying was something totally different. What she's saying is, we just need to make sure like. If, if it's the mayor or if it's our city manager, the people that have submitted applications need to be contacted. So we know, okay, you are still interested in all of these or you're not. And that is not the weeds, right? Like, that's, that's just, I understand that, that's basic. I think that that should be a part of the resolution. That's, that's not a, I mean, I guess to, to that point. I just don't, I think we can just say like, you know, if you, if you submit your application, then it will be on file and someone will contact you. To determine if you want to remain in this process or not, and then we can go from there. And the mayor will look at all of these applications and choose from them.
Yeah, so.
That's what I can really agree to, like the mayor chooses from the people that have submitted an application. Like I do think that the mayor should do that.
Yeah, to, to. About what I was just gonna say, about Councilmember Paige's question about the shelf life. You know, the potentially, if we're, if we're adding this language that we could say, you know, your application will remain on file. Or, you know, do we want to put a shelf life on it? Or do we want to say your application will remain on file? Until you indicate you're no longer interested or you're appointed or, I don't know.
Yeah, and I think part of the process, the mayor was talking about was she was going to make sure that all the applications we have are vetted. You know, before we actually talk about them as councils, so. You know, if somebody did put an application a year ago and we have an opening up in Parks and Rec and they put theirs number one, maybe they can't do it anymore. And she'll say, well, you know, here's the reason why they can't do it. And pull them out of the, and just let the, obviously during the discussion of all of the. Applicants, she could tell us, hey, I talked to this person and they said they can't, they're not able to do it anymore, so. At least that's what I'm hearing.
Yeah, I wasn't arguing for a shelf life. I was just, that was a curiosity.
Yeah, no, I, but I think it's a good point because, you know, again, it's, it's, if it's not written somewhere, then, you know, nobody really knows.
He also had, oh, sorry, Councilmember Crossley, go ahead. You tried to say something before.
No, I'm, Sean said exactly, I think, what I was thinking, so we're good.
I also had another, I had someone actually who was an applicant, both times, also asked if it was possible after. We make the appointments to just let those people know who submitted an application that they were not chosen. Because I don't think people still really, you know, know how the process works or know that there's a public meeting. So I also think that would be a nice, um, quick email to send to people and letting them know. Hey, your application will remain on file, you know, if you're not interested, let us know. But, you know, I think that's also a nice point to add.
You mean they're not watching all of our meetings?
No, there are ten people watching now, so I don't think so.
I would second that idea though, because hires, fires a lot of people. It's, people hate not getting contacted when they're not.
And it's fair, right? Like it's. I guess my only other question about if we are going to, you know, modify our ordinances for consistency sake, I did have someone. Who is, I think something to look at too in our ordinances is like qualifications, for instance, like. You know, I spoke to someone on design review who made the point to me that like, to be on that board, you really should have some background in a building trade. Or, you know, architecture or site, you know, and I, and I think that's a fair point because they're, they're. Argument is that you have to know that stuff. And then they also noted like, you know, the requirement that two people have to be business owners. Like perhaps it would be better if it's an option, but then you could, you know, so I think those are things we should also consider as a group. These were written twenty, thirty, forty years ago. Maybe the requirements will have changed about what we want. Our board and commission members to be able to do. So I, I think that's something to consider as well, if ever.
I, I wanna, I have no poker face, so let's talk about designer review board, okay? I agree with you wholeheartedly or whomever talked to you, Councilmembers, I agree with them wholeheartedly. When, when this happened in June, on June twenty second, like I was just trying to table. Two people that had experience in building or design. And we could not get them on because they didn't meet the business requirement. So I. And then anyways, if you all recall, that ordinance is a mess anyways, because you can, you can. Read whatever you want into it. It's not very clear. I think that was the ordinance where it was like. You are a part of the business community, but it didn't say maple wood. And so anyways, yes, I.
And there's lots of language like that, that it's like the same thing is said a different way in each ordinance. And I think that would be nice to make those consistent. Like resident should be resident and not freeholder or what, you know what I mean? Like there's just weird, weird words. Because they were all done patchwork that I think would behoove us to make consistent so that we don't have to have those. You know, questions, keep asking those questions, what does this mean? So.
I agree.
Yep, despite my railing against consistency, there's a reason there and I would totally agree with that. So yes, for sure.
Jackie, do you need anything from us or did you get enough from this meeting to put together an ordinance to kind of codify the? The way we do this process?
Well, just, just point of clarification, it will be a resolution.
A resolution, I, however, we were gonna do it, yeah.
Yes, so I think I'm going to need some more background on. Or, or, or more details, but so maybe we can just walk through it real quickly, what I, what I have and we can clarify. One is that the procedure will be that applications will be accepted anytime. Then when it comes time to actually appoint, there will be a work session scheduled where the city council will review. And discuss the potential appointments to each board and commission. At that, after that time, the mayor will make her nominations. And then this, at the next city council meeting, the city council will either vote up or down on those resolutions. Is that piece accurate?
I, I did think I just missed the will call to vet part, or is we not writing that in?
That's sort of a separate.
Okay.
I'm, I'm, I'm getting there.
Okay, and also. Jackie, the applicant, on the application part that will, we take them year round. And I would just put in there that, and, and they are distributed to all council members. So, you know, if we get it. Or city manager gets one, he distributes it. If I get one, I'll distribute it, you know, I, you'll, I, I would try to tell the people to just do it online, but. You know, I'm not going to tell people no, because I don't want to do that, but.
Do you want them distributed at the time of the application or all distributed prior to the meeting where?
No, a time of application. No, no, I, I was speaking for myself. I don't know how the council feels about that.
I agree. I agree. I think it's easier for whoever's, I mean, I think if they submit them online, they come to us automatically, so. But I think it's easier for anyone if you get one to send it right away then.
Okay. Okay, and so. I, is there going to be a specific time where. There's a deadline? Is that something that you want to write into this? Like for. Yes, prior to the appointment.
That's a tough one to write in, I guess.
I, yeah.
Okay, I mean, I guess it's easier just to consider them up to the day of. Work session.
Yes.
Okay.
Because that's, that's the point of the work session, even if we received it the moment before the work session, we have that opportunity to have the conversation.
Correct.
Got it, okay. And then. There's, there's going to be some sort of call. Or reach out to everyone whose application is on file to confirm they're still interested. Okay. Then you do not want any sort of shelf life of the applications.
It's not, not an automatic one, no.
No, so do you want, so just a question and a thought, listening to all of this, which is, I. Tell me to be quiet if you don't want to hear this, which is, you can also have a procedure where. I know what the, I think I heard the concern was that you don't want someone to have to reapply. You could also have an affirmative process where they have to tell you that they are still interested before the next process where someone is appointed. And say, we'll consider your application that's already on file, rather to save that step while still requiring some sort of affirmative. Statement of interest by that person. You can ignore. Um, statement of interest by that person, you can ignore that entirely, but that's how I do it on some other.
It's just to clarify, are you saying like, instead of sending an email, they just have to automatically let us know?
They would uh instead, and and I, maybe I don't know how formal your application process is. If it's just putting in a name, then then maybe ignore me completely. But if it's a process where you have to put in information and background and qualifications and all of that. I think the point is that you don't want that person to dissuade that person from reapplying the next year. If they are interested by having to do that process again, you could just simply say. That person has to affirmatively reach out and confirm they are still interested, rather than someone that put in their application five years ago. Having to call them every every single year to see what their interest is.
So I guess I wasn't envisioning they would have to ever reapply again. I was thinking really just like a simple Google form that says, you know, it's an e-mass email that just says, you previously applied. We have nominations coming up, are you still interested, yes or no? And then they submit it.
It seems, that seems like what what Attorney Graves just said, I think you all are saying, I think you're both saying the same thing.
Yeah, it's like, it's like.
I don't want them to have to initiate that contact, I would like us to con, that's the distinction I'm making. I think it's too much to ask people to initiate on their own that contact, I think we should send them a contact and let them respond.
Agreed.
And if they don't, I guess we have to decide if they don't respond, what our assumption is, and mine would be that they're not interested, but.
Yeah, and that's that's going back to what Attorney Graves said, like that's the affirmative, like we're prompting it, but we have to receive that affirm affirmation. Yes, I'm still interested.
That works for me, as long as we are the ones who initially sent the question to them.
Yeah, because I know how I am, I would forget.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, that's a good idea, yeah.
Yeah, okay, great, so it can be like you're saying, one broad, one email from the city manager from the mayor saying. Your application is already on file, um, we are about to consider for the upcoming blah blah blah. And please confirm you are still interested.
Okay.
Uh, it's just a suggestion, it's, it sounds like you are okay with that, but I. It's it's to streamline so that you don't have to call every single person, is really the intention.
Yep.
Okay.
Um, I would like to submit for your consideration. Uh, a opportunity for people to advocate on their behalf. Um, there have been meetings where I have seen. Let me back up, so the the meeting, the last meeting that we had where it was a work session. And um council had questions about certain certain people, and you asked me those questions, like why, why did you choose this person? Um, they, so that particular person or people were on the call. And I remember one saying, I'm here, if you need to ask me a question, you can ask me directly. Um, and so I, that made me just think of, you know, my nine to five job and how folks have an opportunity to advocate on their behalf. Um, for things that they want, and so I'd like to um, you know, gauge your temperature on allowing people to advocate. For themselves, they want the position. So for example, the work session that we're talking about where you're looking at all of the people that said, I want Port Parks Board, that's my number one choice. Those people are given an opportunity to say, okay, this is the reason why I wanna serve on Parks. And it may be more than what they've submitted in their application, so your thoughts on that, council members?
I think that's a great idea, I'd be curious to see how we could also, I mean, I also think there's nothing preventing folks from like emailing or calling us. It's just a matter of like, maybe being, maybe knowing that's available to you, if that's what you want, and also being able to like. Find our phone numbers and emails on the website. Um, so I think I'm. You know, applicants should be encouraged to attend the work session to um, you know, hear what we're sort of asking and talking about. Um, I don't know how exactly we notice that, because it sounds almost kind of like a public forum, uh where if someone wanted to speak up and share. That's an option, but I think as long as you know, I, there's nothing in the way right now of, you know, people emailing and calling us anyways. Um, so I'd encourage them to take that avenue as well.
I I agree that I am always in favor of people having that opportunity, I guess, I just don't want. Those people who don't have maybe the same access or the time to attend to be disadvantaged. In the fact that they maybe can't attend that meeting, or, you know, maybe it's, maybe they work at night. Or, you know, so I guess that's my only concern is that it may present advantage to certain people. Um, and it doesn't mean those other people wouldn't have, you know, wanted the opportunity to share, so that, I guess that's my only.
But I think if the if the uh mayor contacts them and say, hey. Um, your application, one, are you interested? And um two, we're gonna have a work session where we discuss all the applicants for this particular nomination. If you can't make it, is there anything that you'd like to say to the council? You know, to 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 advocate at that point, and either it can be in an email or how however they 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 can do it, and it could be conveyed to us to. Um, you know, through whomever that may be.
What if, I mean, I guess this is a question, what if in the application itself, we provide that opportunity? Because, I mean, they have submitted an application, so presumably we know they're interested and kind of why, but is it more a matter of like? You know, in five hundred words or less, is there anything else you wanna tell us that about yourself or what, you know, I don't, I guess I don't know.
I mean, we could put that on the application, but I certainly think we should give him another opportunity when we're gonna go and chat about all the applicants of. If they can't make the meeting, if there's something they wanna write and send to the council, that could be part of the email that that uh the mayor, the city manager put together.
To point out, the um uh the application does currently ask reasons for wanting to serve under order of commission. And it's free form, I don't know how much, how many character spaces there are.
And I guess my point is, I guess I feel like um that there, some people could be at a disadvantage in that situation. That I think is unfortunate, because maybe, you know, they don't have the access they need at that time to the internet, or they, you know, that's all I'm pointing out. But I, of course, will always welcome people to share, I just feel like it advantages people who, you know. Maybe have more resources and things like that.
I I I can't, so again, right, like I can only speak for myself. I am telling you, I would ensure if someone wanted to speak on their behalf and they didn't have access to the internet. I would make sure that we we assisted them, I would make sure that we would provide them an accommodation, so they could do that. I can't speak to what the next mayor will do, but I'm I'm telling you, I would do that. And I just think it it is weird um for us to talk about someone. And have a question about someone and and they just have to watch, like they they, there are some people that would like participate.
And so I agree, I I agree with you, I I just want us to be, I guess I'm worth saying, I want us, when we're taking in that information. To be cognizant of that disadvantage, I guess is all I'm, but I I agree with you, it is weird to sit. As someone who attended a meeting where people did that, so it is very odd, you know, so I I agree with you. Um, but I guess I just want us to be thinking about that when we're taking that information in.
Going back to being real super granular, are we talking about being able to come into a work session, this work session? And be able to like make a statement or react to the conversation you've already heard? I know that's super granular, but I think there's a difference, right? Like, one is, I'm giving you my sixty second elevator speech. My other is, I've heard you say three things about me, and I want an opportunity to defend or amplify or whatever.
Yeah, sorry.
No, go ahead, go ahead.
I was just gonna say, during a work session is pretty much up to the council if they wanna hear from. You know, hear from somebody, I'm sure somebody, if we were talking about somebody and they raised their hand.
We can do that, okay, I don't know the rules.
Yeah, we could, work sessions are different, I mean, if the council requests, I mean, the public can obviously uh uh watch it and view it. But there's no mechanism technically in the meeting, and correct me if I'm wrong, Attorney Graves, that for for the for the for the public just to interrupt, so to speak. Um, but if they raise their hand in this process, um, you know, certainly, uh, we could, we could uh allow them to speak. Um, you know, the mayor, I guess mayor would make that decision since the mayor runs the the meeting, so is that right for a work session?
Yeah, that's right, that's right. Basically, the at the 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 mayor runs, the mayor runs the work session and the city council meeting. Subject to any rules and regulations that the council would put into effect. So if there's no rule or regulation on something, and generally speaking, I think work sessions are generally. There's, there's no particular procedure that has to be followed, you can call on people, you can allow someone to speak, et cetera.
Makes sense if we did do that, to maybe have a time limit in the beginning. Where people could make a one minute, two minute statement if they choose, and then so that there is a set time. And that they are timed and they cut off, and then we move into our discussion, and as questions arise, we could then, you know, ask the person. If we have a question, does that make sense?
Yes. And so to to answer Councilmember Paige's um question, it's both for me, because that's advocacy. So if it, you know, they could give the pitch, but then also if they needed to respond to a question that we've been discussing. They would have the opportunity to do so, which is what Councilmember Schmidt just kind of set out, so yeah.
Yeah, fair.
Can I ask, is this something that you want in the process and procedure?
Um unless someone has like an objection that we would need to discuss, then yes.
Okay, and so is the consensus that you're giving each person time to talk and to answer questions? Or is each person going to get a pitch time?
Each person gets a pitch time, and then if the council would like to ask questions of that person, then we will. The council and I will have opportunity to do that.
Do you want to time limit that on the front end?
The question period?
No, no, the um.
Yes, like.
I mean, we could potentially have forty people. I mean.
See, I haven't seen one of these yet, I don't know how many of these things come in, forty.
Okay, so ninety seconds and and it's totally voluntary, right?
Yes.
Yeah, not everybody has to.
And then would you also include if 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 they do not want to, that I will, or the mayor will read like any comment. They would like read during that time, so if they submit, even though they submitted something on their application, if they want to add add something else, they can do that. And the mayor will read that to the council.
Okay.
Didn't realize my head keeps disappearing.
The headless council member down there. It's Halloween.
Sorry about that.
Okay, I think that answers the questions on my end, unless you have anything else.
I don't.
I can prepare it and we can ask Michael to circulate it, and then um. I I I would suggest that we not put it on, and it's a totally up to you on whether it goes on another work session or it goes to the council, and then you can make amendments there.
I'm sorry, tell us what you're not suggesting.
I was asking if you wanted to put it on another work session, or if you wanted um it to be placed directly on an agenda. With the understanding that you could make amendments to it at the time that it's on the agenda.
Okay, please, but yes, we would like this to be on an agenda.
That's, that's what I was trying to say, I was trying to say I would not suggest we have another work session without.
Okay, okay.
Totally.
Yes, no, no, thank you.
So in in real quick inquiry to the um upcoming resolution that we'll we'll be passing about the Civil Service Commission, I guess. This, this, what we're talking about is taking care of that, that.
This applies to the all, all, well, you all tell me, does it apply to all boards and commissions?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, then it will just be written as um applicable to all boards and commission appointments. So. Set forth in the uh in the ordinances.
Yeah, all right, so it does take care of it, all right, thanks.
Yes.
So, so what's our best plan of attack, Attorney Graves, in terms of making our ordinances consistent? And then like passing an ordinance perhaps for the Sustainability Commission, so it's not a resolution, like, how would we best go about that?
Be done any way you wanna do it, we could do it one at a time, you could tell me, I I would need to know what you wanted. What your issues are that we need to make the stint, and then I can just draft the ordinances. We can do them all in one night, or you can do them, you know, one a week, one session until they get done. It's up to you all.
Makes sense to do them all at once, because I think they'll be pretty. Like, it would be just changing language to match, for instance, like, you know, has been noted, like, some say appointment by the council. If the idea is it's appointment by the mayor with the approval of the council, then those need to be changed, so it's just um.
Yeah, I think a work session.
Maybe if we can all look at them, and yeah, and then there's the other matter of like changing any substantive requirements, so that's a good idea, Sean.
Yeah, or maybe, and then.
Would it be possible? Good, sorry.
I was just gonna say, the work session probably shouldn't be before a meeting, because we we it probably would take an hour and a half or so to go through. Especially if you had to tighten up language about requirements and stuff like that, so.
Yeah, okay, well, and in that case, you could either ask me to um give you ordinances to start with. Or we, you could have a work session, we could talk through each of them, and then I could make the proposed changes, and then we can put them on an agenda. It's just a question of if you want me to do work beforehand or after, or both.
Could we not just write one line that's gonna be the line for each ordinance?
Well, not for this, because there are some that we really like, so for example, Councilmember um Sch- um Schmidt said that. Design and review, she brought how that is kind of wonky, so that's not just that language, like we need to kind of, yes, so. Um, Attorney Graves, I think the latter, what you said, like, we have a work session, we we go off of the memo that you've already provided us. Because you've done the heavy lifting, uh and then from there, when we have that work session, we can kind of just go down the list. Because you have a list, we'll just go down that list, and then council and I can discuss like what needs to be added and and taken away and things like that at that time.
Okay.
Okay. Any, anything further?
I'll say thank you for everybody putting up with me learning the ropes.
Okay, all, every single one of us has been there.
Yeah.
I've cheered on plenty of shoe leather.
All right, all right, then, um, hearing nothing further, uh, may I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? All right, thank you, see y'all like immediately.